Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting on September 17th, 2024. The Walnut Creek City Council encourages a respectful dialogue that supports freedom of speech and values diversity of opinion. The council staff and members of the public are expected to be civil and courteous and refrain from questioning the character or motives of others participating in the meeting. The city requests that speakers not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the city council meeting. Please refer to the end of the agenda to review options for participating in the meeting. And now we are ready to start. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have the roll call?
Councilmember Francois?
I'm here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Protem Darling?
Here.
Mayor Haskew?
Here. Next on the agenda is a National Preparedness Month proclamation, and it's real long, so please be patient. Whereas, well, good, somebody actually got my joke. Whereas, emergency preparedness month occurring annually in September creates an ideal opportunity for every resident in Walnut Creek to join people across the United States in preparing their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural, technological, and human caused. The Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA announced a 2024 Emergency Preparedness Month theme as "Start a Conversation," recognizing that conversation today can help families and communities to take more actions to prepare for disasters and emergencies. Planning now before a disaster is the best way to improve community resiliency from disaster. We commit as a community to equitable participation in planning for and responding to and commit to disaster relief and recovery service of all communities in the event of an emergency or a disaster. Whereas, when residents work together with the government, take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. Whereas, the city of Walnut Creek and its community partners promote public awareness and educate citizens about preparing their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency. Critical links developed at the local level with partnerships and networking within the local community include the state, the county, American Red Cross, Walnut Creek Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, Rossmore Emergency Preparedness Organization, EPO, nonprofit organizations, and others willing to help. Many volunteer efforts within the community will go unrecognized with these individuals working quietly behind the scenes without public recognition. Whereas, all of the City of Walnut Creek employees are disaster service workers and are committed to responding to disasters day or night, on workdays, off time, and even on holidays. Whereas, locally, emergency preparedness efforts include ongoing training for emergency operations centers, staff implementation of the Integrated Preparedness Plan, and emergency management plan, and ongoing coordination with the Contra Costa County Office of Emergency Services and other agencies. Whereas, the City of Walnut Creek informs its residents on how to take action and receive services and encourages all residents to sign up for emergency alerts through the Community Warning System and WC Alert. And we're getting to the end. Whereas, all residents of Walnut Creek are urged to plan ahead for disasters and encourage their families and friends to do so by visiting Emergency Preparedness website at www.walnutcreek.org/emergency and FEMA's Ready campaign at www.reddy.gov or www.listo.gov for essential preparedness tips and information. Now, therefore, I, Loella Haskew, Mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the Walnut Creek City Council hereby proclaim September as Emergency Preparedness Month and encourage the community to observe this month by developing their own emergency preparedness plans and working together toward creating a more prepared society before the disaster occurs. And I believe we have three people who are going to share this proclamation. Good luck. I don't know how to divide it. I bet we can make copies. So would you come forward? Somebody who can make copies and get them to the other people. Make sure it's posted. Okay. Would you please tell us who you are and would you give us some words of wisdom?
Loquacious Fran Will. I am Fran Gibson. I am in my fifth year of leading the 33-year-old Rossmore Emergency Preparedness Organization. Our core mission is helping our residents ready their households for a major disaster or emergency that will come our way. In our six decades of history as a community within Walnut Creek, we've only had one major disaster, and that's COVID. I'm here to tell you that, given the galloping pace of climate change, things are going to be changing, and we will be meeting disaster or emergencies, and we need to get ourselves prepared. It's an honor to be here. The bigger honor for me is to have any place, role whatsoever, in helping close to 10,000 people stay safe and resilient. Thank you very much for this honor.
So, thank you. I'm Don Proznitz, Walnut Creek CERT. I am a four-decade-plus resident of Walnut Creek. I've been working on CERT for, I don't know, 15 years or so. So, on behalf of our 250 active members of CERT, I want to thank you for recognizing the importance of emergency preparedness. All our active members go under 25 hours plus of training. They are all, you mentioned, disaster service workers. They are all sworn disaster service workers. One of our activities, we're mainly a response organization, so we get called out again by the city when required. Activities coming up in the next couple of months, we just heard, the Contra Costa Fire Department wants to give us some specialized training. I don't know what that is yet, but we will find out. Our basic training course will start again in February. We are helping with the BioWatch. We work with Contra Costa Health Department. We're going to help with the upcoming BioWatch exercises that's coming up the end of September and October. We operate a robust communication system across the city that'll operate independent of any infrastructure. So, I think, like everybody else in the organization, we love this city, and we are delighted to be able to help the city out in emergency preparedness. Thank you so much.
I'm Diana Graham, and I am the Community Preparedness Lead for Contra Costa County for the American Red Cross, and I am very happy to be here tonight. And I just want to tell you that if you spend a little while getting prepared, you can make your whole life a lot less miserable and recover a lot quicker. And just to help you out here, I have left on the back table a piece of paper with a QR code on it. And if you take, scan that QR code, you can take it home and have 23 pages of information that will help you get prepared and make your go-bag and your stay-bag and all those things. And the hardest part of being prepared is you have to think, but it's worth it. My house burned down in the Oakland fire in 1991 with everything in it. We weren't dead, and that's the best part, and we easily could have been. So, the important thing is to know what you're going to do under any circumstances, and we have plenty of options of circumstances in California. And thank you for recognizing us as a partner.
Thank you. Before you go, I want to check with the council and make sure that they do or don't have any questions or comments to add. Does anybody want to talk? Please? Thank you.
I'll just say thank you for what you are doing. It's volunteers like you that help make Walnut Creek a great city.
May I add one more app to yours, Mayor? Everybody in here should have My Shake app on your telephone, please. Every earthquake that's 4.5 and above will appear that's near us. That gives you precious seconds to get under a desk, a table, or against an inner wall, and a duck cover and hold on. Earthquakes are twice the risk of wildfires here. Thank you for just letting me add that.
Oh, it's well worth waiting for.
And I have to add redcross.org/prepare.
Do I have to add something?
I just want to say thank you guys for all of this. You know, my husband and I own a piece of property up in the mountains, and he was up there by himself. And we're getting, we're watching the alerts, and it's like mandatory on either side of us, and he's in between. I'm like, honey, don't you think it's time to go? He goes, well, I was just going to barbecue something. Do you think I could do that first? So, maybe I'll introduce you to him, and we can have a conversation. And nothing burned down.
Evacuate early and often. You can always come back.
That's what I was trying to tell him. Don't wait till they're there and you're barbecuing on the flames, but thank you for all you guys do.
Matt, please. Don't, 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 don't.
Just a quick one. If you can, thank you all for what you're doing to keep our community safe. If someone wanted to volunteer for CERT and go through the training program, I bet there's a website. Maybe you can talk about the schedule and the timing.
So, there is a website. What I didn't do is thank the members of the city staff that help us all the time. Rich Payne, she's just got a new job, has been a big help. Ray Lamb has been a help. And unfortunately, I don't work with her, so I don't remember who it is that helps us with our infrastructure, in particular, our website. So, that gave me an excuse to thank people, but yes, we have a website on walnut creek- what is it? You just said it's walnut-creek. Is that what it is?
Walnut-creek.
Yes, CERT, whatever it is. And that lists all the training opportunities. And the next one will be in February.
Excellent. Thank you.
And if you Google Rossmore EPO, you will find our website, and under Resident Resources is a very well-vetted tip sheet on readying your own household, getting ready. You don't need everything that's on the tip sheet, but it would be very helpful to scan that and make sure that you are ready. So, it's rosmoreepo.org, and my email is at the bottom if you have any questions. I invite those, I welcome them. Email me. Thank you.
I know the Red Cross has got something to say.
Yes. If you want to volunteer for the Red Cross, I'd be happy to have you. I can take you on and train you on the job, so it's really important. Redcross.org has a place where you can go to volunteer and put your zip code in, and we'll get your information.
Thank you very much.
That's CERT?
Oh. No, no. Thank you very, very much, and... Okay. Actually, I feel a lot safer just having met you and know how dedicated you are. Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does any council member want to?
I would like to pull 2E and 2F.
All righty. I have a 2E and a 2F polled.
And I would like to pull H.
And that would be a 2H. Would anybody from the audience like to come in, make a comment on anything on the consent I'm not seeing any movement, so bring it back to council, and may I have a motion to take care of all the ones we accept?
Move to approve the consent calendar items 2A, B, G, and I through L.
Second.
And you brought C and D. A, B, C, D, G, H, I, J, K, L.
Yes, C and D. C and D. Add C and D.
Still second.
We have a G on the G, or the H? Oh, we're coming, the third.
No, well, I brought it back to council, but I will make an exception in this.
No, no, it's already polled.
No, it's already...
That was polled.
It was polled.
Yes, you'll be able to comment in a moment.
Yes.
I'm sorry, that was going to be...
Yeah. Okay. All right. May I have a roll call vote on the items that are approved?
Councilmember Silva?
Please note for the record that I'm voting aye, but on item aye, since I live near that bridge, I don't think I should be voting on approving the work that has been done.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Haskew?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with a note from Councilmember Silva on 2A.
Can I have public comment on ENF, or do you want to?
Why don't we go ahead and do it?
Okay. Public comment on ENF, which is, which is the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Walnut Creek and Walnut Creek Police Officers Association, and approving the amendment to the Amendment of Memorandum of Understanding between Walnut Creek and the Walnut Creek Police Management Association. And I don't honestly care which of the two of you speaks first.
I'll go first because I'm prettier than Andrew. So, I'll make this short and sweet because I got three kids at home that want to wrestle with me. So, tonight's obviously very historic for our union to receive this mid-contract pay incentive. So, we are very grateful. It's been a long road that we've been working on with the city. So, we just want to say on behalf of our union that we're very grateful that the city had opened the door and met with us at the table and, you know, got to this place, and we are very grateful that we're able to do some catching up to help retain our officers as well as hopefully attract some officers to come here and help rebuild our group and building on to the future. So, we just want to say thank you so much to the council for approving this, and I'm just going to keep it at that. I'll let Andrew take over from here. Thank you.
Oh, is this, there you go. Mayor Haskew, Mayor Protem Darling, city council members Silva and Francois and Wilk, city manager Buckshai, and I want to acknowledge also HR Director Raver over there and my boss over there in the corner. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I want to introduce myself formally to the entire room. My name is Andrew Ha. I'm currently the sitting president on the Police Managers Association. I did spend some time as the POA president as well before I was promoted to the rank of sergeant, and what I can tell you is that the two positions are incredibly challenging and rewarding at the same time because it's rewarding because we get to represent our extended family and friends on subject matters that directly impact them for work and for their personal lives. So, I do want to say thank you. I'm not going to make this super long, and I get drawn out when I'm on a podium, so I'm sorry. But I do want to say thank you and express gratitude and appreciation to the city council, to the city, all of the stakeholders that were involved as well, because it's incredibly important for our agency to be sustainable, honestly. It really is. So, again, I just want to keep this short, and I just want to also say to all the folks out there that this city really does care about its public safety, because coming from an agency, I'm a lateral officer, coming from an agency where that was in question, this is a breath of fresh air. It really is. So, again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from here, or shall we roll on?
I just wanted to say thanks, and that's really why I pulled this measure, or these two, because we so appreciate what you guys are doing for us, and we also recognize that we are in unusual circumstances, which led to the decision that is before us tonight, and we are hoping that this will be a good way for us to continue to recruit, recruit new officers, recruit lateral officers, and make sure that our existing officers know how much we value them. And so, with that, I will move to approve 2E and 2F.
And I'll second.
I do, too, just wanted to relay and express my gratitude and appreciation to the fine men and women of our police department, and thank you for all you do, day in and day out, to keep our community safe and eternally vigilant and protecting and serving all the members of our community. And I also want to thank our city manager and our HR director for coming and meeting in good faith and leading us to the point we are today. So, I'm proud to support this motion.
I like you, too. I actually said really nice things at the last council meeting, and I've run out of nice things. No, I guess I haven't, because that sounds rude. I really do appreciate all the service that everybody does. You are, in my mind, the most outstanding police department in the whole Bay Area and maybe even the world, and so thank you so much for all what you do, and I'm ready now for, unless Councilmember Silva wants to say anything. All right, I'm ready for a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Haskew?
Happily aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we've got another loose end, I believe.
Thank you. I pulled the adoption of the resolution on the First Amendment to the City Loan Agreement with Resources for Community Development for an Affordable Housing Project at 699 Ignatio Valley Road. I have a couple of questions, but it's very exciting that we are doing this, because it means the project is finally, I believe, funded so that we can move forward and get the 93 units built. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Stephanie Bryan, the Housing Manager here at the City of Walnut Creek.
Thank you so much. It's been a long road since 2021, I believe, to try to bring this project to funding levels so that it can come to fruition. So, where are we now that is necessitating revisions to the loan agreements?
So, we are currently really happy to have enough funding to be able to move forward. Right now, we are looking to make sure all of our loan documents are able to distribute the full amount that we've committed to the project. And with the ASIC funds that had been awarded, we were able to complete, to get most of the funding stack available.
So, this project is at the corner of Ignatio Valley Road and Civic Drive, the location of a very extinct gas station. I don't think it's been open since I've been on city council. The, I think it's going to have about 93 units for low and very low-income families. Of the funding required to build that project, it's got to be in the $90 million range, if I'm correct. What portion of that is city funding that we're lending?
Well, we're lending around $10.5 million out of the 90.
So, about 1/9th or 1/8th of the funding. The remainder of the funds was really in question for a while. There's a lot of funding required to build affordable housing. What was that last piece and what was the value of that? Because that was the hip, hip, hooray, let's pop the cork.
Yes. The last piece was the ASIC funding that we received on August 22nd, and that is a total $24 million that is available, $20 million in loan and $4 million in grant.
And this isn't the city receiving it? This is the Affordable Housing Developer receiving it?
That's correct.
And you said an acronym. It's the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant Funds?
That's right.
Did I get that right? And it's from the state of California?
That's right.
So, thank you and to the staff and community development for all your work to do whatever we could to help RCD-qualified for all of these various pockets of money to build this. And when do we think these will? They're fully entitled, so they've been approved, but I don't think the permitting, the construction documents are done yet?
That's correct. We are hoping to be permit-ready in May of '25, and that would mean that construction would start that month as well.
And they should be open and ready sometime in late 2028?
We are hoping for sometime mid-2027.
Oh, that'd be great, because I know that we've given them until 2028 in all the loan documents. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you for the work for the city. I have bragged about City Walnut Creek being the poster child of supporting low-income housing, and it is so exciting to add another star in our crown, so thank you very much. All right. I believe, unless there's other comments, we might have a...
Do you have to open it for public comment?
Oh, I thought that qualified. Okay, we need public comment? We're not getting any, so now we can make a motion?
I'm willing to make the motion to approve the resolution approving the First Amendment to the City Loan Agreement and the amended and restated regulatory agreement with Resources for Community Development for the Affordable Housing Development at 699 Ignatio Valley Road, and also for the approval of the State of California Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program indemnification agreement for project funding.
Second.
Now, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Haskew?
Super happy to say yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated to this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. Okay, now's your chance to come forward and give us your feelings about anything not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor Haskew, Mayor Protem Darling, city council members, staff, and our fellow community members. My name is Leslie Gleason, and it's my privilege to serve as the Executive Director of Trinity Center. We just want to take a moment tonight to share some really great news about something we are really proud of, but before that, there already have been several items on tonight's agenda that have touched us. We are an active member of CERT. We rely deeply on our great relationship with the Walnut Creek Police Department, so we're happy for you all, too. Thank you for your support of our Employment Pathways Program. And as an organization that serves the needs of many Hispanic and Latinx people in our community, we want to note you proclaiming Hispanic Heritage Month as well, so thank you. But what I want to share with you tonight is that we have recently, with support of the Contra Costa County Clerk Recorder Elections Department, received support and funding to work with our members and the entire community to support outreach, registration, education, and the empowerment... education, and the empowerment process, so that the people we serve, who are people living unhoused or unstably housed without a fixed address, can still be part of our civic process. So we, even this morning, showed the council member, the council candidates forum that was held last week. We showed it to our members, because we want to help them be educated voters. And I want to also extend a welcome to the rest of the community. In October, on Friday, October 4th, and then again on Monday, October 7th, we will be having representatives from the League of Women Voters to come right onsite at Trinity Center, help people register to vote, check if they're registered to vote, learn a little bit about the process, and make sure that everybody in our community has easy access to the process. So, thank you, I just wanted to share that on behalf of Trinity Center.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council?
I just think that's awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else stepping forward?
I'm seeing none. I will close the public, public comment time, communication time, and we will move on to council members, staff announcements, and reports on activities or requests. City Attorney, do we have any items?
There are no reports from closed session this evening.
And I understand that when I get to the city manager, he has some wonderful news to share.
I do. Good evening, Dan Buckshai, City Manager, and I'm very pleased to share that Rich Payne was appointed yesterday as our new Public Works Director. Congratulations, Rich. Rich recently celebrated his 25th anniversary with the city, having served all of that time in public works in a multitude of roles, most recently serving as a Public Works Manager and as our interim Assistant Public Works Director, and has been very involved in several of the projects that are coming before your council to keep those moving forward. So thrilled to have Rich in his new role, join our executive team, and help provide additional leadership to the city. And with your concurrence, Mayor, I'd like to invite Rich to come up and say a few words.
I absolutely concur.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Dan Buckshai, my name is Rich Payne. I'm the Director of Public Works. So that's a nice ring to it. I just want to take a moment and just tell you how grateful I am to be able to serve as your Public Works Director, serve the citizens of this community. As Dan said, I've been here for 25 years. It's been a great ride. It's been wonderful. It's flown by. I tell people that, right, 25 years? It seems like yesterday I started with the city, and it's just been fun. Every day I come to work, it's just a new adventure. But I do want to say that, you know, serving the public is a wonderful thing, and it doesn't happen, and really, my job doesn't happen without a great team, and I can't be remiss without recognizing the Public Works team, their dedication. As Dan mentioned, I've worked in the operations and maintenance, and be able to work, and being able to work with that team has been fantastic, just to see their daily dedication to go out and really independently own the job when they go out there. And now, serving in this interim role, being able to work with engineering, and the dedication that they have, and just the expertise, and just how they take ownership of their job to serve our public, it's just really impressive. And then, as I've had the opportunity to work with the police department, work with HR, work with the Planning Department, work with Arts and Recreation, and I'm probably missing somebody, but there's a lot out there. Oh, finance, finance, the most important part, right? It's just been, it's just been great to see that same dedication, and it just occurred to me, that's what makes this place so special, Walnut Creek, the staff. You know, we always say it's the little things when you come in. Public Works, you know, we repair things, we do the signs, everything kind of looks good, but that security is just a nuance when they come in. People come to here because they like it, they feel that safety, because things are well-maintained. And so I just, I'm looking forward to working with such a dedicated team. I feel really blessed to be in this position for Dan. I'm grateful that he has had enough confidence to give me this opportunity. And then also, you know, my previous boss, I can't, I'll be remiss without giving her credit, Heather Ballinger, for just her leadership and her mentorship, and giving me the autonomy to grow and learn this job, so I really appreciate that. I know CERT was up here, and I just, I want to just give them, you know, a high five for just having the opportunity to work with them in some of these disasters, and so it was really nice to see some recognition for CERT. We started incorporating them into some of our drills, and then also our exercises, being able to help with storm events and stuff, so it's been a really good partnership with them, too. So I wanted to give them their props. So, anyway, thank you for, you know, again, allowing me to serve as your Director of Public Works.
Next item on the agenda is, close the rest of us. So Cindy Silva.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and welcome, everyone. Rich, congratulations. I don't know if you remember that in 2006, we were in the Leadership Contra Costa Program together, and it was a great opportunity to meet you and actually work with you in this very casual setting of learning about all things that go on in the county. So I have fond memories of getting to know you, so thank you. Just a couple of announcements. One is that I am serving as the Council Representative on the Artist Selection Committee that is reviewing and selecting recommended artists for the artwork that will go in as part of the Heather Farm Park Community Center and Aquatics Project. Our charge is to recommend a small group of artists that will be selected by the Arts Commission. We had our first interview last week of 10 candidates. The number started near 150, we winnowed the herd to, from 34 to 10. We interviewed them. It was an international cast. One of the artists was, is from Amsterdam, but he was actually in Tokyo. So we were interviewing across all time zones, it felt like. We have narrowed the candidate list to a group of five that will be preparing proposals for the projects, and what they envision, and their ideas, and then, before the end of the year, the Arts Commission will be narrowing it to one, two, or three artists and artist projects, so that they can begin working. The artists that are selected will begin working with the design team on integrating the art into the design of the community center and the aquatics facility. We have great opportunity here to really bring public art to bear as part of the project.
Has it been decided how many pieces there will be yet, or?
No, there's a budget. There's a funding available based on our city code, Arts Code, and they were all asked if they would mind not getting the whole thing. They were all very, very smart and politically savvy enough to say, of course, I'm flexible. So probably one, two, or three people, but probably not all five. And there are a range of artists. Some were 2D artists, and others were 3D, they were sculptors, some would be, do work that's appropriate indoors, some outdoors, some both, and it was very, it was challenging to figure out who to pick. It was virtually a tie, for all of them. So we're looking forward to that. The Housing, Community, and Economic Development Council Committee met last week, and we approved what we did last week tonight, which is the approval to rewrite the loans for the new project at 699 YVR. I would mention that, and I don't want to steal your thunder, but the Walnut Creek Sister Cities Board met last week. I sit on that board. Mayor Protem Darling is the liaison to it, but I wanted to extend our thanks to the HR team for helping the board members of Walnut Creek Sister Cities figure out how to do the process that is required in the state of California for background checks for chaperones. So we have a group of students that will be traveling to Hungary and Italy in about three weeks, and as part of that, chaperones go along, and so we want to be sure that they have met the state requirements. But then conversely, these students are visited by Italian and Hungarian students in the spring, and so they will have families that have to go through the same process here. So it was a robust discussion, but I did want to extend our thanks to the HR team and the city manager for helping us figure that out. And finally, I will mention Community Service Day is October 12th. Signups are well underway. A number of schools need help. They're not hard projects, but they're very, very fulfilling, and you can go to walnut-creek.org/service, or it's on the banner ads on the homepage, and click and check out what the projects are and sign up. So thank you all very much.
We're walnutcreek.gov.
Walnut creek.org still works, and I don't think it's as simple as what you're saying. I think it's, there's ca.gov, I think, so it's a longer URL. All right. I gotta pick somebody. You're next to me, you go.
Okay, thank you. I always like to be there in a clutch situation. As Cindy Silva said, Sister Cities did meet the other night. I had to drop off because my son called me, and so I made it through most of the discussion, but I really do appreciate the help with getting everybody so that they are well-certified, and keep our kids safe in the process, and we are excited to see the kids next time they come. Let's see, a couple of us went to go with John Muir Health. They were recognizing Mentas Positivas, which is mental health that is working within the Latino community and conquered through, and just using peer counselors who are trained to help with mental health, and they've been operating for 10 years, and just had a tremendous ability to make inroads into a community, especially amongst some of the people in the community who culturally are a little reluctant to admit that perhaps things are stressful for them, and it was a great opportunity. It was also a great opportunity, because they were doing it in English and Spanish, I was practicing my Spanish while I was there. We partnered with the Climate 350 MCE and a number of others on electrification fair out at CaliCraft on Saturday. I went by, and there was an amazing number of people out there looking at heat pumps, and looking at heat pump water heaters, and solar, and, you know, it wasn't just the beer, they were there to get information, and it was great, because that, you know, our Sustainability Action Plan really relies on people wanting to make changes in their greenhouse gas footprint, so that was really good to see. Community cleanup will be out this Sunday, if anybody wants to go help clean up the streets. It is, again, weirdly satisfying. But then the last thing I wanted to talk about was, last Saturday, we had an event in Civic Park, and we were really too bad that Mayor Haskew couldn't be there to celebrate with us, but we were celebrating Amit Alor, who is our gold medalist in women's wrestling. She was just a fabulous person. She got there early, she kind of, she's only 20 years old. She's the youngest woman ever to win a wrestling gold medal. And she, we brought her out, we gave her an Olympic flag, and she came up through the crowd, and the crowd just loved that. Much thanks to Dan Ashley, who did the interviewing of her, and kind of helped pull her story out, and he also brought up her brother and her coaches, so that everybody could hear the story of how she had gotten to where she was. And then the thing that most depressed me about her is, after we were all done, she had agreed that she would take pictures with kids or kids at heart, and so we had people line up, and she was there for two hours, showing little kids her gold medal, answering questions, taking pictures, and just amazing, you know. I kept asking her mom, I was like, is she okay? Does she want to just cut it off? She's like, nope, as long as there's a kid in line, she will keep going. But our city staff did all this on relatively short notice, because she is a very much-in-demand young woman, and I really appreciate, the whole two hours that she was there, our staff was there helping her through that, so I really appreciate that. We will also have a celebration for our other gold medalists. I've lost it. Iainesku, what's Sabrina? Sabrina Iainesku, she's playing with the WNBA right now, so she is not available. She's a little busy, but we are looking for something with her later this year.
We also have a Paralympics.
And we have a Paralympian, but I don't, I'll let you...
Well, I don't have her name.
I don't have the name either. Anyway.
We had another one.
It was just one of those, this morning at the Water and Energy Task Force, which is run by a friend of mine, Bob Whitley, who is a very curmudgeonly man, and he said that he was there on Saturday, and it brought a tear to his eye, so I think we did a good job. If we can make Bob Whitley bring a tear to Bob's eyes, we're... That's an amazing feat. That's an amazing feat. So that's my report.
Okay, Kevin.
All right. Couple of things in addition to what Mayor Protem had just mentioned. Couple of weeks ago, and every time school starts, we hear about there's speeding that's going on near schools, and during drop-offs and pickups, and rolling stop signs. So I went out there, one of the crossing guards is behind Valley Vista in the Woodlands area, and I guess Mayor Protem Darling is waving, because she was there as well. Yes, she was, I wasn't going to forget. And we, we also had a couple of our Transportation Commissioners, and because one of them's in the audience, Jared Ash, I'll mention him, as well as Charles Quelling watching at home, and we also had our staff, traffic engineers, there's my boardman and her team, too. We were all reviewing this for a half an hour, we were out there. We did see, there was some speeding, some rolling stop signs, we saw the challenges that the crossing guards have mentioned, and parents have mentioned. Principal was there as well of Valley Verde, and we talked about sending out, posting social media notices, both on our own pages, as well as the principal sending out an email to all of her parents, also asking students, so if any parents are watching this and have school-age students, they also have to follow the rules of the road, and if they are not stopping at stop signs and running across the street quickly, or they're going down the wrong way with electric scooters or bikes, that's a problem, especially with the sun shining in at 7:40 a.m. into the windshields of drivers. It's just an accident waiting to happen. So I ask all parents, especially ones with school-age kids, to let them know the rules and the safety of the roads, and also, parents and anybody else, just take an extra minute or two. Better to be safe in this instance than any kind of an accident that can happen out there. In response to that, traffic engineering was out there the next couple of days. They put reflective poles at the intersection that we were at, and are going to be reviewing all sorts of different options for what we can do to help make the road safer for bikers and pedestrians and students, and there's all sorts of tools in the tool chest, so they're going to be looked at. So thank you, staff, for quickly, for coming out there and also taking a look at that. We know this is not endemic to just Valley Verde, this is the entire city that needs to take this precaution. On another note, I was at the County Connection launch in Martinez of the second pilot for an automated electric shuttle. This is going to be taking place after, well, it's now being launched, but County Connection buses, when their normal schedule is ending at about 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, these autonomous shuttles will then take over in Martinez. So this is the second pilot after the pilot that we had launched in Rossmore, just about four or five weeks ago. So this is really exciting. I would say that this is the future, but this is the now, and these are the kind of things that we are seeing, and this is what we're going to be witnessing, I think, throughout the state, and it's exciting, because this is going to really help public transit and be that first mile, last mile solution that we've always talked about, and why people aren't taking public transit more, because they are still driving to where the public transit is. So hopefully, this is a big step in the right direction. As long as I'm on County Connection, I'll mention that at our next general board meeting in two days. I'm the, I should be the incoming chair, I do have to be voted on that, but I suppose it's possible that I won't be, but I've been vice chair, and I think they're going to actually make me Chair of County Connection for the next year. I'll report back next month. And lastly, I want to say, driving here down Ignacio Valley Road, I see Walnut Festival going up. I know that we haven't had the Walnut Festival for at least the last couple of years, few years, right, prior to the pandemic, so it's coming, it's going up, and please go on to the Walnut Festival website, and I'm trying to pick this up right now, it's called the walnutfestival.org, because they do need volunteers, and they still do need them from some of the different areas. I know there was this big outpouring last year when the Walnut Festival wasn't happening, and saying that we'll step up and volunteer, now's your chance, step up and volunteer, the Walnut Festival is happening, and we look forward to seeing you there. That's my report.
And now Matt, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a member of Recycle Smart, which is our garbage recycling and composting organization... I'm a member of Recycle Smart, which is our garbage recycling and composting organization for six-member agencies, including Walnut Creek, Lafayette, Arinda, Maraga, Danville, and the county. And I serve on the ad hoc franchise selection committee. So the authority contracts with, for collection services and post-collection services, that contract, those contracts are set to expire next year?
Twenty.
Twenty twenty seven. That's right. We extended it two years. So we're in the process now of going through the, we issued R F Ps for post-collection and collection services. We're doing post-collection first. The key is to decouple collection from post-collection so that we can get more, a more competitive environment for both services. The ad hoc committee met last week. Our staff had interviewed various different vendors, and will have recommendations to make to the full board on the variety of post-collection services, transfer, disposal, composting, recycling, commercial food scraps at our October board meeting. Once we've agreed on a post-collection, a series of post-collection vendors, actually, then we'll turn to collect, the collection process. Also serve on the Housing and Community Development Committee along with Councilmember Silva. At our meeting a week or two ago, we provided direction to staff on the R F P process for our affordable housing funds. We have about six, 6.3 million collected from various different fee sources in that fund pot. And we'll be going out with an R F P process, letting affordable housing developers know that that money is available and seeing kind of what sort of proposals we get back. And then that'll be coming back to the Housing and Community Development Committee, I believe it's like February, early next year, after staff has kind of received the responses. And the reason why it's done this way is because we, as a council, voted to make it a more competitive process for the use of these very scarce funds. And it's also timed along with the county's affordable housing fund measures, Measure X. So the, both R F Ps will go out in November. And as Councilmember Silva referenced earlier, it takes a lot of money to build affordable housing projects, and it requires pots from various, pots of money from various different sources, including the county, the city, and the state. Yep, I think I'm done with that. I did have the pleasure of attending the gold medal ceremony on Saturday. And I have to say, that will go down on the top 10 experiences for me as a council member that, just being able to meet her firsthand, just who she is and her family. I totally agree, it was, it was a great community event. And you hear, you know, here are people like Garth Brooks and superstars who will sit there and sign every single autograph. Here's a 20-year-old woman who, you know, took that same level of commitment and care with the entire community that was there, and it was genuine, you could tell. And I do want to give a shout out to Betsy Burkhardt, who put it, brought it all together in less than two weeks' time, got, you know, award-winning news anchor Dan Ashley to do the interview process. We had several staff members there. I know Kevin Safin was there. Matt Bolander was doing the videotaping, and Liz Payne was taking photographs so people could go on a Q R coding. I think the photos are already posted. So it was a fantastic community event, and I look forward to doing more of those because it was a definite feel-good. And I heard from our congressman, Mark DeSagne was there, as was our supervisor, one of our supervisors, Candace Anderson. And Mark DeSagne said it was a great event, and he really enjoyed attending it. Next Monday, I'll be doing my annual attendance of the Government Law Class at Los Lomas along with Councilmember Wilk. We'll go to Mr. Abicoli's class and talk about the council's five priorities and the work we do as a city. One of the highlights is teaching them whether or not they're in the city or the county. And then, just finally, I had an inquiry from a constituent about a nonprofit group called Park Run, which is a U K-based organization. It's community volunteer-led. I don't think it involves much involvement from the city at all. But it's a group of runners that gets together on a weekly basis at a designated spot, and they run basically a 5 K. So it's an opportunity to get members of the community involved, interested in running. There's no pace, it's not competitive. It's just a way to bring people together and meet on a regular basis and get outside and get some exercise. So it's in the early stages, but as I have updates to provide on that, I'll let everyone know. That's my update.
Thank you. So mayors do a lot of things, as do all the council members, because we cover for each other. I've done everything this summer from attending the funeral celebration of life for somebody who is well-revered as the John Muir, to celebrating 100th birthday party at a care home. And it just is so amazing to have these moments with the community. You're reminded that we're not only responsible for figuring out how to pay for everything and how to get the streets things, we're responsible for making sure that Walnut Creek is the special place it continues to be. I do have some kind of work-related things. I went to the C C T A Planning Committee meeting, and we agreed that we would work with the Cal, Cal, the state transportation people. Caltrans. I even wrote it down. Caltrans, I am getting old. And that we're working on coming up with a countywide evacuation plan. The Accessible Transportation Fund, of which I am partially the chair in helping make that come out. Accessible transportation for the old and the infirm, and I believe also G I's. I think we have a one-stop shop, a one-click, one-call system that we're prying to put in together, and we got some funding for that. One of the things I was proudest about was Contra Costa. Mayor's conference came to Walnut Creek at Boundary Oak, and very few people complained about Ignacio, although there were a couple of people. But we had the community college director who was there and told us about the community colleges. And it was just wonderful to see all the former mayors that made it. And it was a chance that I enjoyed, especially because it was a chance to publicly brag about our staff and how absolutely wonderful they are and how well they treat us all. Went to Transpac, which is a R T P C, which is a small section of the transportation thing. And we mostly talked about the budget. We made the meeting short so that we could go out to Martinez and ride in the autonomous vehicles. They are absolutely, absolutely fascinating. And I need to remind everybody that the Roof Bancroft Garden has been named by Travel and Leisure as the most beautiful garden in the world. So please, if you haven't been to the Roof Bancroft Garden, enjoy, enjoy, enjoy. And I believe the city manager has a clarification about the council, the city's website.
I did just want to take a moment, since we had a few references to our website on a few different items. The city's website was updated somewhat recently. It's walnut creek C A dot gov. The prior site, walnut-creek.org, will redirect, but we are trying to get the new website out there, which is walnut creek C A dot gov.
Thank you. All right. So much for all the fun. Now we're going to do hard work and move on to the next item, which is consideration. And that item is acceptance of the Shadelands Property and Business Improvement District, the P bid annual report for fiscal year 2324. And you're going to take that on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite up Bob Blensheid, President of the Chamber, to provide an update of the annual report. As your council is aware, the city contracts with the Chamber of Commerce to provide administrative oversight and management of the Shadelands Property Business Improvement District. And this is the opportunity to share what's been happening out at Shadelands. Welcome, Bob.
Thanks, Dan. Mayor Haskew, members of the council, it's good to be with you all today. We, I brought swag, as is our practice. This is the replica shuttle, along with the schedules, which we have spread around here. And please feel free to promote that with us. So what I thought I'd do, Mayor and council members, is provide an update on the 2324 annual report. Also go into, as you know, we worked together on rebranding the Shadelands district. We have a PowerPoint that I'll present following up the 2324 annual report. And then we have some video we want to show you with what we're working on in the social media front, which is becoming quite important in today's promotional capacity. So as you know from the staff report, the P bid was originally established in 2014. So we're in our 10th year now. And after five years, the district, through the 1994 plan, was able to extend it for 10 years. So we're operating off of the 2020 to the 2029 plan, the district plan. What I want to cover is, is that there are basically five overarching goals. But I'd like to visit some basics here. The mission, the purpose of the district is to promote the Shadelands, attract diverse and innovative businesses, enhance property values, and enrich quality of life for the community and region. P bids are generally formed for an important reason. Our reason was chronic vacancy at the time. And while we are experiencing that in office, we're very pleased to see what is happening in the medical front. I want to acknowledge the work of the staff working with us in the P bid to work on our implementation strategy, which we'll talk about shortly. The vision is to advance the dynamic business and lifestyle destination of the Shadelands. And our values, which haven't changed, the foundation is collaboration and creativity. Collaboration, meaning the property owners, the tenants, the city staff, all working, rowing in the same direction, as some would say, along with some creativity in light of the challenges we all face. So goal number one is to attract, support, and retain innovative growth companies. The location of Shadelands is both a strength and a challenge. Expanded efforts to improve access to Shadelands throughout the region are essential for the future. Goal number two, enhance wayfinding and signage, which will take place in this next phase because we just completed the rebrand and started promoting the branding. Wayfinding comes into it. These improvements are needed to benefit visitors and employees at Shadelands, including easier internal wayfinding as well as transportation alternatives. Goal number three is improve mobility, infrastructure, and services. Employees and residents and visitors are increasingly relying on alternative modes of transportation enabled by changing technologies, evolving development patterns. Shadelands can evolve to meet these new transportation alternatives. I mentioned the replica bus that we've distributed throughout the Shadelands. We have plenty. So if you know folks that would like to take advantage of the promotional piece, our employers out at Shadelands view this as very important. And I'll share some stats with you that I thought were rather intriguing. You know, since 2015, our partnership Route Seven is the shuttle. Route Seven has provided service to over 650,000 passengers. Route Seven has traveled about 2 million miles, which, incidentally, is the equivalent to four round trip to the moon. It saved 430,000 pounds of C O two emissions, and County Connection, as a whole, removes over 3,000 single occupancy car trips per workday, which is a phenomenal stat to share with you. Goal number four is to continue to promote Shadelands as a destination through branding and marketing exposure. We took a major step. It took us almost an entire year. Shadelands has emerged as a destination center. Further efforts are needed to increase visibility of Shadelands within Walnut Creek and throughout the broader region. And we'll share with you some of our plans for that. We also are doing on an annual basis, Made in the Shade, which is coming up on Sunday, November 3rd. And finally, the fifth goal is to increase development that supports Shadelands as a quality location to live, learn, work, and play. Much of Shadelands was originally developed as an office park, but has expanded now to a place to live, learn, work, and play, with a growing focus on health and well-being within retail and other services to support Shadelands and the surrounding neighborhoods. Further development flexibility is important, and we're seeing that as an example with Y V R, I should say 2700 Y V R. That's where the fertility clinic and the pulmonary specialist is located. That building is becoming quite an advantage for us in the, in the healthcare. I'm going to now share this PowerPoint with you that you have in front of you. What we wanted to achieve together is make this an exciting asset to our community. Just as a reminder to us and to the audience in this, at home as well, we're talking about 3.4 million square feet of 270 acres and 106 property owners. Quite a vast area of our community. Very important. I've already shared the mission, the vision, and the values, the goals. I've gone through each of the five goals. So before and after, the 2324 plan that we submitted on March 8th is the old brand. It's quite exciting to see the rewrapping of the buses that show the services that are provided at Shadelands. This last year, we had 54,000 passengers, which was up by about 20% from the previous year. So we see that growing number each and every year. And this is a subsidized program where the property owners do pay for the shuttle services. We know that the, that people know of Shadelands, but do not know of the vast diversity of offerings. We created a brand that is colorful, positive, to create awareness and impact. And the bus serves also as a billboard to educate people on the various offerings. So in today's world, the website is everything, as you know. Visual website easily navigated by users on desktop, tablet, and mobile. Display categories and listings of all businesses and organizations. And we have supplemented this website by putting over 100 businesses in there, and we're trying to reach every single one of them to reach our 300 number. It's quickly educated and inform the user about the offerings, and we can track usage in our campaign to this website. Next is our new mobile-centric newsletter. This impressive newsletter has a new format. It's easy to read with summary text with links back to our website. So the website is the foundation for our communication. It's larger visual impact, link to the website to track interest and to push more traffic toward the website as well. And we have about 6,000 subscribers to this newsletter. Digital display ads. The campaign focuses on educating about the diversity of offerings. We call it link trips. We want people to come out to Shadelands for more than just one purpose. The use of variable communications, combinations of offerings to present user choices, entice users to do more than one thing. Thus, the call to action is make the most of every visit. Our digital, I should say, our brand presence is also extended with advertising. You'll soon see in the next publication or two of Diablo Magazine, where we focus on families, you will see that is a part of our display advertising component. As we track seniors and business community audiences, we look to the Rossmore News, San Francisco, Sacramento, and Silicon Valley business journals, where you can see the display ad shown here. Real adds a little color to our publications. Email blast. We will blast quarterly to various email opportunities showing the diversity of offerings, families and seniors primarily in some of those. And bart. This is an example of what we've done at the Walnut Creek Bart Station. Strong brand presence at the Walnut Creek Bart Station with 30 posters, tracking interest in. of offerings with each individual QR code. So if you go up to the healthcare and you look at that, we will see how many people check on healthcare versus the other offerings. Also at the stations, you'll notice that what they call station kings or the overarching digital ad there, presence in North Concord and Lafayette. It grabs commuters' attention quickly. It captivates the audience by those that are waiting for the train, as you can see in the center section on the platforms at Concord, Pleasant Hill, and then Pittsburgh. Bus shelters, very important to the shuttle system throughout our community. 20 locations throughout Contra Costa County see the display ads for Shadelands with our multiple offerings, as well as digital billboards and billboards itself. Example at north of Main Street exit and driving northbound on 680, as well as the digital billboard south of Highway 4. And finally, before we run a brief video, vibrant social media, which is very, very important in today's world. All new social media accounts create for Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, LinkedIn for hashtag #VisitShadelands, creating a face of Shadelands through videos and images. New content every single month that links to the website, social strategies for growth followers. And now we'll run the video. Thank you.
What's that? Brother, ooh. Baby, do you know that's what? Brother, ooh. Heaven is a place on earth.
Joy Bound People and Pets was founded 32 years ago as an animal rescue foundation. We took in dogs and cats, those are the species that we serve, and helped them find homes. That mission grew and grew and grew, began to realize that it wasn't enough just to form a new pet family. But in fact, we had to be involved in helping support that pet family and keep dogs and cats and families together through social services like pet safety nets, accessible veterinary care, behavior and training for the public who wants to have a well-behaved dog or cat in their home, and lots of other things that now include pet-related vocational training, free vaccine clinics all around the county, and even more.
Hi, my name is Brandy. I am the co-owner of Walnut Creek Chip. Here at Chip Cookies, we offer delicious cookies. But what separates us from the rest is we have this amazing cookie bar where not only do you get cookies, but you can add toppings. We have drizzles, frosting, sprinkles. We even have ice cream. So you can get what we call is a chibzuki, which is a cookie and ice cream in a bowl. And we also just added to our menu the ice cream sandwich. A few specials we have is right next to us, we have dulces and fajitas. And on Tuesdays, they have Taco Tuesday. We have joined in with them on Tuesdays, and we offer 20% off our chibzukis on Tuesdays. Some things that we love about being in the Shadelands community, it is immersed in many different parts of our lives. We're also really close to a lot of schools and sports facilities. I feel like it gives us a great opportunity to be really spread out throughout the community and to create a lot of cool and diverse relationships.
Being in the Shadelands community is a blast. We're so well centrally located here. We're surrounded by so many walking paths, restaurants, shops. There's just not a downside to it in any way, shape, or form.
I must tell you, it's a wonderful lifestyle center. It's a very diverse community. There are many different kinds of businesses. It's fun and easy to pop out for a quick lunch. And after work, all my errands can be accomplished right here in Shadelands.
Shadelands is just this special place in Walnut Creek, and we've been here for over seven years now. And so we've seen its growth over the past seven years and its transition, and we're excited about the future.
Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
I'll ask if there are any. Are there any questions? Yes? Okay. Please. Thank you for the report. And it's very exciting to see the transition and how much has changed over the last 10 years. Maybe 11. Maybe we're in our 11th year, right? One of the responsibilities that you all have representing the Shadelands property business owners on behalf of the city, it's kind of this legal structure, is really the management of the finances, the management of the budget, and the reporting to us and the community. So I appreciate that the budget and financials have been presented. But I did have a couple of questions. And I did ask them of our Assistant City Manager to ask you in advance, so this shouldn't come as a surprise. I wouldn't want to disappoint you and have you be prepared to answer the questions and then not ask them. The, under the expenses, the transportation wayfinding, can you elaborate on the signage and also the crosswalk or infrastructure? What you're actually doing in that regard?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to. Let me start with the crosswalk first, because I think that's important. Let me acknowledge, first of all, that we collect about $400,000 a year. We began in 2020 when we were all shut down. So we've accumulated quite a fund balance. And I've had pretty consistent conversation with staff on how we can invest the fund balance, so.
And it's important to invest it in one-time money projects, not?
Exactly.
Because you're not going to have this on a recurring basis.
Right. So regarding crosswalks, the city accumulated about $2 million. We closed off sidewalks, improvements on streets, and the P-Bid owners felt it was important. And so we worked with former Director Steve Waymar and asked Madar Boardman, the two of them, on how we could improve safety along Mitchell and Shadelands. So crosswalks, automated crosswalks are part of that. And so part of the investment, and that was for the safety there.
So it was partnered with the city? So it's some investment of the city, but you augmented the funds?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're looking for other kinds of projects in that process as well. Wayfinding will occur now that we have a new brand. The other question I think you asked was?
Can you elaborate on market research and branding and marketing? It's $175,000 per year. And I know you've been working a lot on that. Is it just this branding and the bus wraps, or what else are you looking to do?
So the market research was a number because we felt we wanted to do some, similar to what we did with the DMO when we hired an economist to tell us what the impact of some of the, we were looking at, that has not been invested, it wasn't invested this year. So it was planned for, but we're probably going to do it after we do the rebrand. So it was a part of the plan, but it was not expended. You'll notice the report was produced in March. And so we provided a financial statement in our May meeting and then in our August meeting. So we do have more detailed information on that.
Okay, great. My last question is, what do you do, if you're collecting about $400,000 a year from 100, how are the assessments structured? It's not every parcel paying the same amount? It's based on size?
It's an exponent of square footage. And it's assessed by the county, and the funds come to the city. The city reallocates and does have.
We shave off a little bit at the top and.
Administrative.
So what happens in the future? Because you're investing a lot of preserved cash.
Right.
What's going to happen in the future when you've run out of those one-time monies? Or you've expended them, not run out, you've expended them and invested them? Are you looking at other ways to increase your funding stream?
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. So since 2020, we have not increased the assessment. The management plan allows us to go up 3% a year. We've exercised our right not to increase it. So we will probably increase it going forward, probably the next fiscal year. Our plan, as I indicated, we have about $1.3 million in fund balance as of the end of the fiscal year. Multiply six times 400,000, that's 2.4 million plus. So we have a plan to at least not overspend. We want to spend all the money by 10 years, but not overspend. Does that make sense?
You want to invest all the money that you've accumulated, and then you have operating expenses to basically manage it?
Yeah, the operating expenses will be, obviously, the marketing, rebrand, the research, all that is one-time shot. Now we're going to find out where there should be investments in infrastructure.
Thank you.
Should like to figure out how we can get a ton of a shuttle out there, too.
Thank you for the work. And we, as a council, I think we can all say that we appreciate the opportunity to hear from you on a regular basis as to what is happening, since we somewhat have a stake. Not only do we have properties there, but we also have kind of a legal and regulatory requirement to stay in touch. So thank you very much.
The oversight's real. Yeah.
Any other questions? Matt, please.
Thanks for the report, Bob. It's very exciting. Every day I see the billboards at the BART station and generally see one of the shuttles. And I think the new logo and the colors, especially when you showed that side by side, what a contrast. And it made such a positive difference, I think. What the, our staff report, and you mentioned it, talk about some of your future efforts. And I'm wondering if you have some details on that that you can share, particularly in regard to the transportation improvements and the wayfinding signage?
Yeah. So the signage is extremely important to the property owners. But we felt we needed a new brand before we invest in signage. And we'd be working with the Community Development Department to develop the strategy for what that's going to look like. And property owners have their opinions, but, you know, we have ordinances and issues we need to fall in line with. What I'm really interested in talking long-term about, what ultimately do we want the Shadelands to become? As many of you know, they're supposed to be along a freeway a long time ago. And so there's quite a few changes that we see happening. The biggest issue right now is office vacancy. We're seeing that other places in the city. So we're examining what our role can be in that in conjunction with the city. City sits on the P-Bid, votes, and so we feel very positive about the exchange. And, you know, City Manager Buckshai, his community development person, Charles, we are all having discussions on what the future is going to look like.
Okay. Thank you.
So the future. We did a significant redo on the zoning back in 2016. Have you guys been thinking about that part of development? In, when you think of the future, going back and looking at what uses are allowed at Shadelands? Or what are you thinking?
Well, we know that you have a general plan you're going to be looking at.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that if we have a general plan, you guys have yours, we should make sure we're working.
In concert, absolutely. That's why the collaboration creativity comes in handy. Yeah, it's essential to participate in those conversations. We're very excited about medical, I have to tell you. Ever since Alexander Quinn was retained by you folks to talk about how the cancer centers promote the increase in medical, recent statistics show between 28 and 30% of all employees work in some type of medical in Walnut Creek. So what's our role in that? And how we can maintain and grow that sector of the community?
Okay, good. We look forward to working with you guys as we dive into that. That'll be a lot of fun. Thank you.
So what are we doing to ensure diversity in terms of the kinds of businesses that we have? And ultimately, how are we going to measure the success of our investments so far?
Yeah, good question. So the Economic Development Action Plan, which of course is led by the city, we feel a strong tie to that plan. And I think that as we examine the amount of investment we're making in marketing and rebranding, what's the next step in that process? And I've had meaningful conversations with both City Manager and Assistant City Manager about what we can do to attract certain kinds of companies here. Many communities don't have the luxury of an economic development department like the city of Walnut Creek does. And working with concert with the Community Development, Mayor, I really am optimistic about how we can work together to attract industry new. And frankly, in recent meeting with commercial brokers, we don't want to benefit by the unfortunate situation of other cities. But that's what's happening today, is people are coming to Walnut Creek because they feel safer here. And it's something that we believe, in concert with the city, we should be working on attracting higher-paying jobs, as some would call it. I call it primary sector, where we're really going after those that are already living here, that can work closer to home. And I think that's how I believe through our work together on the Economic Development Action Plan, we can make a real case for business growth here.
And I believe we can. But I don't hear how we're going to make sure it's diverse and whether we, or whether we kind of focus on medical and other things. And how do we measure when we finally have hit success?
Well, we're going to do that together with results. My belief is that we can do all the studies in the world, but if we're not accommodating the needs of the future, which is more than medical, but medical is where we have an extreme advantage, along with retail, which seems to be pretty strong here by comparison.
Okay, thank you. All right. So is there anything else that we would like to follow through on?
Yeah, it's a public comment, and then the requested action is to accept the report.
All right. Public comment, my favorite topic for being excluded. Is there anybody here who wants to be a time filler here? Okay, nobody is stepping forward. I believe you are ready to sit down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mayor, I will make the motion to move to accept the Shadelands Property and Business Improvement District Annual Report for fiscal year 2023-24.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Will.
Aye.
Mayor Boettner Darlene.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Absolutely.
Motion carries unanimously.
Who shall I announce making the first presentation?
I'm going to venture, it looks like Ben Schuster here. So welcome, Ben, and we will have you kick things off.
All right, good evening, Mayor Haskew, members of the council. As Dan said, my name is Ben Schuster. I'm with the Community Development Department here. I'm joined by a number of staff. Aaron Sage, our Principal Planner, Erica Vandenbran, our Community Development Director, as well as Alessandra Lundin with Raimian Associates, who is our primary design consultant in developing the non-residential design book that's before you today. Really excited to be here. This is a key milestone in this design review, standards and guidelines process that has been ongoing for the past five or so years. The prior senior planner, Janine Cavalli, took this almost to the finish line. And so we're here hopefully to get us over the hump today. Just an administrative note before we dive in, there was, staff prepared a response to council comments received prior to tonight's meeting that was sent out to the council earlier this afternoon. Based on those council comments, staff. Based on those council comments, staff also prepared additional changes and updates to some of the items in your packet. And those are listed in the errata sheet that was also sent out this afternoon. So what are we talking about tonight? I guess this is my opportunity to fill in all those words that the, the mayor mentioned. And so the main piece of work tonight under consideration is the adoption of the non-residential design review standards and guidelines. In addition, there will be some refinements that staff is proposing to the residential book that the council adopted back in June, just a few months ago. We'll also talk about corresponding changes to development standards for non-residential. And then again, as well as some additional refinements to residential development standards that the council adopted back in June. And then finally, we'll again touch on additional refinements to the design review process. The council will remember back in June, it adopted wide changing, wide changes to that entitlement process. And that includes changes to the outdoor dining policy and ordinance. So first, a quick overview of how we landed here today. This project started off due to state housing law, which mandated the use of objective design standards for housing projects. And then state law was then further updated to expand the applicability of those standards to even more residential projects. And so at, the, the council directed staff to update the city's 1996 design review standards and guidelines as a result of state law. The council also at that time took the opportunity to more generally direct staff to update standards for all projects, including commercial and other non-residential. What came out of that work is two design documents. There's the residential and residential mixed use document, and again, adopted by this body a few short months ago, and the non-residential document, which is before you tonight. The non-residential document follows a very similar format to the residential book. And many of the standards you've actually seen before, they were included in the residential book as part of the mixed use standards. And just want to note the, the key difference between the two. Unlike residential, where the state has mandated approvals for projects that comply with objective standards, for commercial projects, the city does retain much of its discretion that it has today for these projects. And so this work was accomplished through a, a lot of hard work by a number of different staff here in the city, as well as members of our design review commission, who are all part of a city working group that met and discussed these on a regular basis, engaged with stakeholders and the, and the development community. And so we're just very thankful for all the time and effort that they put in. And so what came out of that work is that adoption draft, again, before you tonight. We have taken that adop- adoption draft to various commissions, the design review commission and the planning commission. We've heard very positive things, and that's how we're in front of you tonight. In addition, we did get some additional feedback following the planning commission meeting in August. We were very fortunate to be able to engage with a member of a, a well-known architectural firm who's done a lot of work around auto dealerships. And we were able to actually meet with them in person and go through line by line on the auto standards. And so those are reflected in a number of the red line changes in the adoption draft. And before I turn it over to Alessandra, who's going to walk you all through the book itself, just to show you where we are in the process, again, we're, we're essentially right at the end with that black arrow there at council tonight. And then should the council take staff's recommended actions tonight, we would plan to return on October 1st at the next council meeting for the second reading and adoption of the ordinance. And so with that, I'll, I'll hand it off to Alessandra, who's going to talk you through the non-residential book. And then I'll, I'll come back to finish it out.
All right, good evening, Mayor Haskew and members of the council. As Ben mentioned, I'm Alessandra Lundin, and I'm going to walk through some of the content of the design standards and guidelines for non-resident- non-residential uses. So some of the project objectives.
Could you speak straight into the microphone?
Yes. Is this better?
That's a lot better.
Okay. So some of the project objectives for the non-residential standards and guidelines include promoting quality architectural design, site planning and landscaping in the city, providing a clear set of design criteria for developers, creating a user-friendly document, and modernizing for current best practices. We also focused on some gaps that were in the 1996 guidelines, so some topics that weren't covered in there. And we also addressed some special uses in this book, including auto sales and rental, auto service stations with or without convenience markets, drive-up restaurants, which are also known as drive-throughs, and shopping centers. So here on this slide, you'll see the high-level table of contents for the document. So the topics covered, or the chapters include an introduction. We have a chapter on site planning, architecture and building design, parking, walls and fences, lighting. And then again, this last chapter focuses on those special uses I mentioned previously. I'm now going to walk through some of the details of what's covered in each of those high-level topic areas. So within site design, we have access and circulation standards, such as creating smaller blocks and new connections, minimizing curb cuts and driveways to reduce conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles, and creating pedestrian pathways that connect to sidewalks, parking areas, outdoor spaces and transit, for example. We have a section on service, services and utilities. So standards include locating utilities, equipment and service areas to the rear and side of buildings, and screening them from public view. And then within landscaping, we have a number of standards, including minimum size and spacing of plant materials, limitations on turf, and stormwater management. The standards in the building design chapter really focus on the portions of the building that are visible from the street, the public realm, and outdoor spaces. So they include orienting buildings and entries towards the street and outdoor spaces, standards that get at mediating the scale, massing, and bulk of buildings, and enhancing the pedestrian experience through building modulation and articulation, creating inviting and well-designed ground floor retail spaces with standards that address transparency, so percentage of windows and doors with glass, retail depth and height. We have standards for entries, orientation of entryways, and weather protection for entries, venting and grease traps. And then there are a number of standards that address outdoor dining, location, circulation, and furniture. And then lastly, of course, encouraging a variety of materials and colors that really add visual interest to buildings. Additional topics covered in the non-residential book include parking, such as locating parking to the rear and side of buildings, creating pedestrian routes through parking areas, and screening surface and structured parking from public view. And then within lighting, these standards focus on ensuring that lighting is pedestrian scaled and reducing glare and light trespass onto adjacent properties. So again, the last chapter, chapter seven of the non-residential book, covers special uses that really require specific design considerations. And I'm going to, I'm going to walk through some of those on the next few slides. And again, Ben is going to talk about this later. But while we were updating the special use standards and guidelines, it really became apparent that some of the standards kind of overlapped with some standards that were already in the zoning code, or they more appropriately, appropriately belonged there because they were really more development standards than design standards. So again, we're going to talk about some of those amendments later in the presentation. This slide covers some of the standards and guidelines specific to the design of shopping centers. And they include building design and articulation. We have requirements for publicly accessible private outdoor spaces in shopping centers, pedestrian pathway design, dimensions and materials. Again, limitations on curb cuts and driveways, and then street and corner activation. And Ben talked about this a little bit earlier. The next two special uses focus on auto-oriented uses. So they include auto sales and rental and auto service stations. So the 1996 standards and guidelines, they were updated and improved to add clarity and address best practices and recent development trends. So that included creating standards for both pedestrian-oriented retail format urban showrooms and the kind of more traditional auto-oriented showrooms that you see. We also added or improved landscaping, fencing and wall, and screening standards for the auto sales and service stations, really to help kind of minimize their impact on the street frontage and the pedestrian experience. And then lastly, the following slide highlights some of the topics and standards included for drive-up takeout restaurants, otherwise known as drive-throughs. They include requiring landscaping along the perimeter and along drive-through aisles, orienting building entries towards the street rather than parking areas, encouraging four-sided building architecture, providing separate and distinct vehicular and pedestrian circulation through the site for safety. And we have some outdoor dining design standards as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Ben.
Great, thank you. So just wanted to touch briefly on the residential book. I mentioned at the beginning, some additional refinements to that, to that book that was adopted by the council back in June. We've essentially just added some clarifying language about what types of projects this book would apply to. We updated one standard relating to exterior building colors. And then we are revising any standards that we are proposing to change in the non-residential book that overlap with the residential book. So essentially just corresponding edits. And then looking briefly at amendments to the zoning code on, for non-residential standards, one thing we're doing is to update the definition of a shopping center. Essentially, we are broadening the definition a little bit to make it more flexible and better aligned with kind of modern understanding of what a shopping center is. We are also amending some standards for special uses that Alessandra talked about just a moment ago. So for gas stations and service stations, removing a BRRRR requirement that was in there for landscaping, slightly increasing the canopy coverage allotment, and then adding in new standards relating to circulation, screening, and illumination. And these came out of a stakeholder discussions with owners of these types of businesses. And so this is kind of directly a result of, of that feedback. And then for drive-through restaurants, we've essentially added in all new standards into the zoning code relating to the drive-through aisle design, the stacking areas, driveways, and then pedestrian access. And then, as is noted in the errata sheet in your packets, one of the changes we did make based on council comment was to remove the maximum number of curb cut limit of two. So we're going to take out that proposed addition to the code. And then finally, one very small refinement to the residential development standards that the council adopted just recently. This is the landscaping standard adopted by council for single-family homes in duplex zones. We're just adding these two words in orange, excluding driveways, just to make it clear what the intent of that standard is. And to kind of bring us home, going to talk very briefly about additional refinements to the design review process that was just updated. Essentially, two changes here to the designer view chapter of the zoning code. We are taking this language and splitting it apart, essentially to create additional consistency with what the community development director is able to act upon in regards to designer view. The director is able to approve up to four single-family homes for designer view. And so the 500 square foot addition limit on single-family homes wasn't quite, didn't quite make sense. And so we're just kind of cleaning that language up to match what we're doing today and also what is in the code. And then finally, we've added in that the community development director has the authority to approve outdoor dining spaces. And that's corresponding to changes that we made to the outdoor dining policy, which I am now going to talk about. And so finally, with outdoor dining, because of the recent changes to the design review entitlement process, we found that there was some additional cleanup in the language needed in the outdoor dining ordinance and policy. And so that's essentially what we did. We, we kind of made sure it aligned with how we understand and, and practice design review essentially in the city, adding in appeals language, clarifying who does what, and then adding in a finding for the custom pods approval. And pods are the permitted outdoor dining structure. And so with that, staff is looking for the council to make the following actions tonight. First would be to adopt a resolution to essentially adopt the non-residential design review standards and guidelines book, as well as the amendments to the residential book. And those would include all the changes as noted in the errata sheet. Second, looking for the council to adopt a resolution to update the outdoor dining policy to provide clarifications on the designer view process. And then finally, to wave reading and introduce an ordinance to amend the municipal code to adopt the new and revised standards for residential and non-residential development, as well as the additional refinements to the designer view process. And so with that, myself and a number of us are available for any questions from the council. Thank you.
And I'm warning you, there are geniuses in land use, so you're in trouble right now. Matt, yeah, please go first.
So, thanks very much, Ben. Great, great update, great report. That was a lot of information and you synthesized it quite well. I'm just going to try to keep my questions kind of higher level. And so just in general, can you summarize for us how these non-residential guidelines differ from the residential guidelines we adopted?
Yeah, great question. I think I'll let Alessandra answer that. But I mentioned there are a lot of overlapping standards. And that's because the residential book was also for residential mixed use developments, which is a type of development under state law that, you know, we have to approve with objective standards. Alessandra can speak to what the overlaps are between the books. And then on the commercial side, the stuff that's not in the residential book are the standards for all the special uses, the auto sales, the gas stations, as well as the standards relating to the uses, the auto sales, the gas stations, as well as the standards relating to the shopping centers.
And if I could refine my question just a bit, too. Just, I know the residential guidelines were objective because they had to be under state law. Would you characterize these non-residential guidelines as objective, too? And if not, what, where's that dividing line between objective and subjective? We're all dying to know.
So, we did structure both of the books in the same way. So they're both structured with both standards and guidelines. The difference is a little bit more potentially, I would say, on the process side of things, right? So for residential projects, if a project meets objective, all the objective standards, it would be very difficult not to approve that project under state law. The guidelines are encouraged, but again, a project might not meet those. For a non-residential project, there is a lot more discretion on the city's part. So the design review commission, they would be looking at, you know, whether a project fulfills the intent of the standards and the guidelines. So they could, I'm trying to think of a good example, say there's some kind of new, modern, really exciting architecture for an office building or what have you, and the, you know, the building doesn't meet strictly the articulation standard that we have in this book. The DRC could say, "This is meeting the overall intent of creating really high-quality architecture in the city." So even though it doesn't strictly meet this standard, we think that it is meeting the overall intent, and we would recommend approval, for instance. Is that, does that help a little bit?
It does. And so with our residential book, then essentially, if a residential project meets the standards, which are the "shall's,"
Yep.
But it doesn't meet the guidelines, which are the "should's," the city doesn't have a lot of discretion really to say no to that project.
They, you know, planning commission, for instance, could say, "We would really like to see this," but it would be very hard to require
Okay.
Those things.
Whereas with the non-residential, there's more discretion really with the standards and the guidelines.
Yes.
But the standards are still intended, they're still supposed to be objective, that the developer would know coming in, looking at
Yes.
The guidelines, okay, if I designed my project consistent with these standards and guidelines, I'm in really good shape, and there might be some flexibility on the guidelines.
Yes, we're still trying to create a predictable process for developers, and so, you know, and they want to know, you know, what is the city looking for? And so, again, the standards are really the priority, and the guidelines are kind of more of a nice-to-have. But again, it also, with more discretion with the non-residential book, there's also this opportunity to, you know, provide exceptions if there are, you know, varying site constraints for, you know, a non-residential property, for instance, and they can't meet certain standards or certain guidelines. Or maybe they meet a stand, maybe they don't meet a standard, but they meet one of the other similar guidelines, and again, meeting that overall intent of that section.
And I have a question, too, about the special uses. And, you know, was there, was there any thought given to some, like, gas stations, convenience, we don't see a lot of those here, and I don't see, think we'll see a lot in the future? Is that one that, what, kind of what was the thought process in including that and making sure that stays in the guideline?
So that really came out of the 1996 guidelines. So those were the special uses that were addressed specifically in the 1996 guidelines. So we didn't remove any of those special uses if they were in those 1996 guidelines. We just updated the standards.
Would they still serve a benefit in terms of remodels? I know there's one.
Yes, yes, they could still serve a benefit in terms of remodels.
Okay. And then finally, on the outdoor dining, you know, we went through a process to kind of do pre-approved dining structures, and I think the design for that is set. So these are really only intended to apply to the custom pods, is that right?
I'll let you.
Yeah, great question, council member. So the, the pods have a separate design guideline essentially, and so pods are subject to that, and they say, you know, you pick your roof material from this set, you know, you pick your planter from, you know, this set of menu of options, and then the city approves it. The city staff get involved in kind of the typical designer view process for, specifically for the outdoor dining, I believe on private property, so outdoor dining patios, and there's one more type, but it's not the pods. And then the custom pods, that's where the designer view commission used to have the approval authority. If you wanted to deviate from a standard in the pod structure, what we've replaced that with, given the council's previous direction to remove the approval authority of the DRC, is to have staff approve that, but the DRC would advise staff. So it'd still go to DRC for a meeting for design considerations, and then for a staff-level approval.
Okay, that's interesting. I'm not, I don't know that I really appreciated that nuance with the, with, those are more custom pods, right? The pre-approved ones, it's all staff-level.
Correct.
But the custom ones still go to DRC for advisory to staff.
Correct, correct. And I'll note, we, to date, we haven't received any applications for the custom pods, and I believe there's only been one of the normal pods, which I believe is Main Street Kitchen.
Okay, that was one of the, that was one of the pre-approved designs?
Correct.
Okay. And I had one more question about special uses, and it had to do with, you don't call it a drive-through, you called it something else. And, but we've had, we had a restaurant relatively recently that had takeout service with no drive-through. And are we being too restrictive in terms of these design standards? I know obviously some of them are going to apply to the drive-through lane and things like that and separating, but are the guidelines broad enough that they could apply to a use, you know, without, without drive-through service? Takeout service but no drive-through?
Right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but I think the zoning code has them listed as separate uses, right? So there's restaurants, maybe there's sit-down, there's restaurants with takeout, and then there's restaurants with takeout that are drive-throughs as well. And so this section is specifically applicable to takeout service with drive-throughs, and a lot of the standards are aimed at regulating drive-through services and design. And so, yes, but like, if it was a, if it was a restaurant with just takeout, they would still have to meet the standards in the rest of the, the book, including a lot of similar site design standards.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, if I ask a couple of questions regarding the pods, that was really the one question that I had on this. So I believe that when we had approved the pods, whenever that was, in the last year, we had said that if this becomes too cost-prohibitive, we could bring it back to council at some point to discuss. It sounds like there has been one application for this and no others. And so my question, I guess, would be to Erica or city manager, is this something that would be brought up now or at a later date to discuss modification of that, which obviously we'd like to see outdoor dining, but we don't want to make it so difficult that nobody does it?
Yeah, let me speak to that one, if I may, Mayor. A few things, this is related to design, so I would suggest we not commingle the pricing on this. A few things I'd like to highlight. You may recall the rebound or the emergency program for dining ended in mid-May. So it's been a few months since then that businesses were allowed to have their temporary structures. So we're looking at about four months it has passed since this new permanent option has really come into play. Folks could have done it sooner, but frankly, why would they if they had free use of temporary structure as opposed to investing in a permanent one? We are, this is actually an agendized discussion with Walnut Creek Downtown for Wednesday, and we're anticipating receiving some feedback on the cost and what they're hearing and seeing. I would also highlight, you know, we have one pod so far. We have had some interest in a couple others, but also Locust Street has been off limits because of all the construction, which is intended to be wrapped up here in about a month. So we will find out, I think we'll have a better sample once Locust Street is available to see if restaurants approve that. And then the last thing I would just mention, and we could have this discussion at a future date if it ends up being agendized, the policy related to the cost was to have both something that's aesthetically pleasing and safe and meets all building standards. So that drives the construction cost. The ongoing charge related to the permitted outdoor dining structures was intended to offset the cost of lost parking revenue, and it was intended to be revenue-neutral to the city. So if it's found that either of those are too cost-prohibitive, most likely we're looking at scaling back and simplifying the aesthetic aspects of the pods, and then potentially looking at some type of city subsidy related to the ongoing rental of those. And those would obviously be policy decisions for your council at a future date.
Thank you.
Moving on to Cindy Silva, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work on this. I know it has been a long process and some interesting sidesteps along the way. It's very comprehensive amount of work, and to go back over 30 years and try to think, figure out what people were thinking at the time is always interesting. The, I also want to thank staff, Erica, your team, for taking the comments that were sent over the weekend by council members, because we had a few days to read through everything and basically thinking about everything, pulling the team together and figuring out which ones were appropriate changes and which ones made no sense, and giving respectful responses to us as opposed to just saying, "No." And I, all with the intent that what we're doing here is really trying to create a way for property owners to be successful as they redevelop and enhance their properties in a way that is objective, so they understand what we're looking for, yet also affords great opportunity for flexibility and customization, and that it's an efficient process because it is predictable, and all recognizing that state law doesn't mandate that we do it this way on a certain number of meetings. So it's really trying to figure this all out. I particularly wanted to thank you for including stakeholders, and perhaps you could outline where stakeholders were brought into the process, and it feels like there was a robust amount of stakeholders just in the changes that happened since the planning commission meeting that we saw, and then the changes that we were making in the last few days. So who were the stakeholders that were involved in this process?
I can start, and then I can ask staff to, or Ben to add. So there were a number of stakeholders involved in this process, both for the residential book and the non-residential book, and there is some overlap there with some of the stakeholder conversations. We did public outreach at the beginning of the project. We did a social media contest at the very beginning. This is kind of the high-level visioning. And then we, we met with stakeholders specifically from the Chamber and the downtown merchants and other kind of retail and similar stakeholders a couple of times during the process. And while we were, while we ended up meeting with them on the residential and mixed-use book, again, because of a lot of those standards that we talked about were applicable to both, we ended up making the same changes or revisions based on their comments to both books. So for instance, a couple examples, or a lot of them focused on the ground-floor design standards, and there was actually a woman who was kind of a retail leasing expert who was also involved in those discussions, and she was saying, "Okay, particularly for mixed-use and other types of retail, this is what retailers need to see. They need a ground-floor height of at least 15 clear feet, and that means you have to have a taller ceiling height, so we have 18 feet." They need venting and grease traps so that restaurants can lease those spaces, and not just, you know, yoga studios, for instance. And, you know, she talked about retail depth. There were standards on column spacing to kind of really maximize that retail leasable square footage. So there were a lot of conversations with these kind of retail stakeholders to really refine a lot of the ground-floor design standards. And again, those were both in the, those are both in the residential book and are reflected in the ground-floor design standards in the mixed-use book. And then more recently, economic development also was involved in a lot of outreach to various stakeholders, including auto dealerships. And we did receive public comments right before the planning commission hearing, and then we met with some of the kind of auto dealership stakeholders, was it last week or two weeks ago now? And went through line by line, as Ben mentioned, the section 7.1 on all of the standards for auto dealerships, and, you know, they provided additional insight into some of the standards, and would they work for some of the large auto dealers in the city? And we made some revisions to those standards based on their comments.
Based on all of this input, was there a couple of things that were just consistent across the, the various types of development? Life would be better if?
I think from, I guess from the Chamber and the developer's standpoint, I mean, I think you already mentioned this before, predictability is probably the key theme I would pull out that a lot of retailers and developers mention consistently. So it's not necessarily on, I can't think of one on, you know, specific standards, but it's more that, you know, it's very helpful to have clear and objective standards for predictability in the process, so they know, you know, what the city wants to see, and they can design to that.
Slight change of subject. Councilmember Francois mentioned the difference between the designer view standards for residential versus these non-residential. One of the issues in residential is that you, under state law, a developer may trigger a timeframe where it is a really fast shot clock, and you only can have a certain number of meetings. So you have to be very efficient and make sure you basically give your input spot-on at various steps in the process. But that shot clock and those state requirements at this point in time don't really exist for commercial, non-resident, the truly non-residential. But we have decided to make our process as efficient as possible and really reconcile and amend our design review and planning entitlement process to be consistent across both sides of the coin. Is there, I'm getting to my question. In the non-residential environment, you could have a single building of 2,000 square feet sitting, freestanding in an existing shopping center, and you could have a quarter of a million square feet development or redevelopment in a major shopping center. Do we have the flexibility in our design review and planning and entitlement process, the discretionary process related to those larger commercial projects, to require a little more review with design review and a little more thoughtful, I don't want to say that we're not thoughtful all the time, but a little more time through that process in the discretionary review process? And is that codified, or do we need to go back and say it in, in the stand, not in here, but in the design review process explanation?
Yeah, great, great question.
Was it clear?
It is clear. The, the answer to that is, is yes. And so like with the residential developments, there are now codified thresholds, objective thresholds for what the community development director, aka city staff, conduct design review for, and then what the DRC would first hold an advisory meeting to the planning commission on for larger projects. And so
Is there a way for designers, who would do this? Is there a way for design review? Is there a way for design review to have one more bite at the apple in that same timeframe? A study session, and then, an advisory meeting? Because these really large projects, particularly in a commercial environment where there may be a multiplicity of tenants, and issues going on, as opposed to a 500-unit apartment building tends to have a singular set of issues, colors, et cetera. Is there an opportunity in our, in our process now for, for someone, whether it's the community development director, or the planning commission, to say, "We need more architectural input from the body of professionals who serve in that capacity"? Now, I think I'm clear. You're nodding, but yet, I don't think you're nodding yes to the, as the answer.
If I can jump in here for just a sec. So, the short answer is yes, you do have that authority. But it's, it's driven in part by the fact that you're not limited to the number of hearings that you would be under a residential project. And so, if, for instance, the design review commission or the planning commission wanted to engage in a further discussion with the applicant for that larger commercial development, they wouldn't be limited to the number of hearings that they could accomplish that in. So, you would have that authority, keeping in mind that part of the standards, part of the document and the regulations that are before you tonight are standards, meaning mandatory, and guidelines which are permissive. And so, there's going to be some give and take between the city and the applicant on that issue.
Isn't another component to Cindy's question that, at least, I saw a reference in here to Broadway Plaza having their own set of design guidelines, and them saying, being specific to Broadway Plaza, adopted in connection with the big remodeling effort, and that those guidelines, to the extent there was a conflict, would prevail over these more general, non-residential guidelines. Do we have guidelines like that? Was it, probably adopted them in connection with Toyota? We adopted a lot of things that night.
We, we did with Toyota as well, too. Toyota's is a little bit different in the sense that the limitation on the city's authority under Toyota is that they, you can't apply design standards to the commercial portion in a way that negates the rights to build the commercial portion.
Okay.
And so, it's not a complete prohibition on any further discussion of it. The Toyota land use regulations associated with the special district do have design standards in them, in as well, too. So, there are some specific projects, like Broadway Plaza, like Toyota, that are going to require looking at those specific entitlements as well, too.
So, I think I posed my question. I heard the frustration of the design review commission having their authority clipped, yet it, they never were allowed to actually have a conversation about, "Well, wait a bit. What about a large orchards shopping center projects? Something new, something incredibly complex, and where we would want their input?" And so, as opposed to one storefront that ends up in the spin cycle for four meetings because architects can't agree what, what works well or not. Does the community development director want to say something?
Just simply that I agree with the city attorney, that there, because it's the commercial, we don't have the prohibition against having more meetings. And there's both the ability of the design review commission to say, you know, "Please come back, we need to get further answers." There's also the ability for...
So, they have the authority to say, "We're not ready to give you our final input."
Right. But they're right, it's a recommendation to planning commission. And then, planning commission also has the ability to say, you know, "We need more information, or we need further study around this particular area," so that there are more safeguards in the process than what might immediately be apparent.
I appreciate that. I've been waiting for months to ask that question. I have two more questions. Well, one is a comment. I really appreciate the, looking at the guide, actually, the, the parking entrance or parking access standard, and realizing that if you force everything into the lowest-ranking street, you're coming closer to impacting a neighborhood. And so, I appreciate looking at it, looking at it as a guideline, because I think that's important. And then, I will mention, I am the one that asked all the questions about the drive-throughs. I appreciate the changes that were made, but I will caution, you, I do not believe I could find a drive-through anywhere unless it's large amounts of land that does not actually create pedestrian and vehicular crossover. Even in one that was shown in a photo, which is the Burger King up here on North Main, or on Broadway, there is a, you cannot get into that Burger King without crossing a drive-through aisle, just because of the way the parking is configured on these very tight sites. So, I think we need to be cognizant of that, as we work with this standard, because it's hard to be pure.
Yes, that's, that, yes, you're right. There are sometimes site constraints that could mean that pedestrians have to cross the drive aisle. But we do have, in the standard, we say that if it does cross the drive aisle, it needs to basically be distinctive in some way. It needs to call attention to that crossing by using, you know, different paving material, or colors, or what have you, to really call attention to it.
I, if I had my way, I'd put a note to the reviewing authority of this, this is going to be tough, to be, you know, to be as protective as possible. So, thank you.
Did they leave you any questions?
Just a couple. So, when councilmember Francois, I think I finally got the pods thing, and I was like, "Oh, oh, okay." Because I've always assumed that design review would always be advisory to planning. But it sounds on the pods, design review is advisory to staff. Is there anywhere else where we have that particular little curlicue?
Off the top of my head, no.
Okay. Good, good. Because that means I only missed it one time. And then, my other questions, and I'm going to try to do this without sounding like Monty Python, and when is a standard, when is a guideline, and what is the building code? But under sustainable building design, the building code on page 42, doesn't, the building code requires rooftop, you're saying rooftop photovoltaic generation, which to me is rooftop solar. But here, we have it as a guideline. When is a guideline a requirement?
So, we made this a guideline, and I'm not, I'm not an expert on the green building code, but my understanding is that solar is required on certain types of, for certain types of uses, and not necessarily for all uses. So, we made it a guideline here, because, yes, sometimes it might be required by the building code for certain types of uses, but when it's not, we want to encourage it, not necessarily require it. And we also give a couple of different options here in that standard. So, we're just trying to encourage an array of sustainable building features. It could be solar, it could be solar water heaters, it could be reflective roofing. So, we're trying to ensure that there are, you know, there's flexibility in, in providing some of these benefits and these sustainable building features, without necessarily requiring specific types or amended facilities.
Would it be less confusing if you said something like, "Sustainable design features, such as rooftop solar, not required under the building code"? Or just put something in there? Because I was reading, I was like, "Wait a second, are we going backwards"? Because I know we had a lot of discussion about that. That, that was the one part. And then, it sounds like the decision was that the, the green building guidelines were all guidelines and not standards. That we're just, we have enough, and is that really, we have enough in the green building code, that there wasn't anything in between required in the building code, and more of a guideline?
I think I understand the question. Yes, I mean, we, we wanted to make sure we didn't conflict with the green building code, which also changes very frequently. So, that was another consideration, is that gets updated every couple of years, and they keep adding additional requirements to it. And knowing that, we didn't want to conflict or create future conflicts where this, we would have to address or revise this. And I think there, there are, you know, certain uses or buildings or sites do have constraints where they might not be able to do some of these things, or they could be cost prohibitive. So, I think that's where, again, we wanted to provide that flexibility, rather than strictly requiring some of these, some of these features. And I think the, like, for instance, siting and tree shading and energy conservation is a good example of that. That's possible on, for certain sites and conditions, and it's really just not in other situations. Yeah, please.
Councilmember, if I could just add one thing. Erin Sage, principal planner, we also have, as you know, our sustainability action plan, which, there's some overlap in some of the strategies within that plan with these guidelines. But unlike the guidelines, the SAP has, you know, specific timelines for when those are going to be implemented by. And we didn't want to get out ahead of that policy document here, since council will be, you know, looking at those measures and deciding how exactly those should be implemented and in what timeframe.
And I'm just thinking, some of that information might be good to get incorporated here, so that people know, because if I were to read this without having read the SAP, and without, I mean, hopefully, somebody would have somebody on staff that understands the building code. But I might not realize that this is not all that you have to do, that there are other things that you have to do. So, I'm not quite sure if there's an action item out of that, but clarifying...
See if it would work right in the applicability.
Applicability.
As we, as we implement items from the SAP, we would, we would go back and update the guidelines, and kind of in the next update cycle, just to ensure that there's consistency. But right now, the SAP is sort of a list of, you know, future actions that have been taken yet.
So, you're anticipating that these will get updated when we get to, I think, the first one is actually 2026, the first one where it becomes, instead of a really nice-to-do, it becomes a you shall.
That's right.
So, you're anticipating that the, that's all, so you're anticipating these will get updated when the SAP, or something turns into a...
Right. Once, for example, implementing an EV charging requirement, as opposed to just putting in conduit to be ready to, to make it easier to install chargers, when that becomes a mandate, we wouldn't want to have something that says, "Oh, chargers are just a guideline," right? We would, we would come back and, and clean that up as soon as possible.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thanks.
As I forecast, they didn't leave much less for me. So, the only thing, as a neophyte, for whom most of this conversation was over my head, I'm, I'm going to ask a really basic question, which is, as it was being discussed, I, as a person who doesn't really understand everything, understood this only really applied to existing business areas and things like that. Does it apply to any potential legal, commercial construction in the whole of Walnut Creek?
I'm sorry, mayor, I'm not sure I understood the...
Well, I, I'm hearing it all applies to downtown, because we talked about downtown and all that sort of stuff. And, and yet, there is a whole part of Walnut Creek that is not downtown, and, and I want to be clear about what it applies to.
Great question, yes. These are the citywide design standards and guidelines, so they do apply across the entire city.
Except where they specifically, like Broadway Plaza.
Except where specifically noted in the applicability section, such as Broadway Plaza.
Thank you. Now, now, we neophytes know something new, too. I believe it is now time for public comment, and this happens about this time of the meeting always, and look around the audience, and there is no audience. And therefore, I am going to make the, oh, do you have a comment? Oh, see? Oh, we have a comment in the back. Would you please come forward? And then, talk behind the microphone, and somebody's going to have to help him get it, so it's near where we can pick it up. Oh, you're an expert. Okay, silly me.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Andrew Halverson. I'm in eighth grade at Foothill Middle School, and I live in Walnut Creek. I just wanted to say, like, I love being active, and one of the things I do while I'm active is playing foot, is playing pickleball. And I think the city of Walnut Creek should build, like, more pickleball courts, so it's accessible to others, and it's easier for people to be more active in Walnut Creek, and have more fun playing pickleball. And I think it's a great sport where people can connect with each other, and, like, meet new friends and people, and I think it should be more accessible to other people.
Thank you. It's a little off topic, but because you were so brave to come forward, I let it be heard. So, thank you very much, and we, and we will listen to, we've listened to your message, and we will see how it applies. Thank you very much.
I am Anna Halverson. I'm Andrew's mother, and we live up in Northgate. And the reason that we thought this does apply tonight is that I saw on the agenda that the Shadlands zoning was being considered, and we have spent a lot of time over at Cali Craft, and in Copac, and these other sports facilities that are developed over there. And so, I was wondering how we could go about bringing a pickleball facility to that underutilized part of, of Walnut Creek, and specifically, a commercial enterprise. So, not necessarily something that is run by the city parks department, but a pickleball club, like, similar to some of the other sports facilities that are currently in business. So, that's it.
Thank you. You wove it in quite nicely. I appreciate that. And I'm hoping the people at Shadlands are listening. So, that, I believe, covers the public comment. I see nobody stepping forward. Do we have...
Mayor, perhaps Anna could talk with our assistant city manager, so he could make the connection that we had the discussion about Shadlands earlier in the, earlier in the agenda, and so, and how that might make, give her a referral, if that's okay.
Right, that's great. Yeah, so recommend that. Okay. Trying to get the meeting back on focus. Does council have any more comments, or anything that they would like to pursue? I'm not seeing anything. And our instructions are to...
I would love to see the slide with all the motions we need to make.
If I may, Madam Mayor, just one point of clarification about the number of meetings the design review commission is allowed to have. We actually did codify, in the, in the last updates in June, one meeting, unless additional meetings are requested by the applicant. And so, if there is a desire for the DRC to be able to hold multiple meetings for commercial projects, we would need to make a amendment to the municipal code.
Which is not in front of us tonight, but we might have to...
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we are at the moment, and I am assuming you wanted the list of recommendations, so that you would make the first of the...
So, I'm happy to move to adopt the resolution, making the findings and approving the non-residential design review standards and guidelines, and approving minor updates to the residential and mixed-use residential design standards and guidelines, as modified this evening by the errata sheet that we received, and that also, this is finding the project exempt from sequo pursuant to section 15061B3.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote?
Council, councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make the motion of adopting a resolution updating the city's outdoor dining policy, clarify the design review process.
Second.
Second.
He can do it. We'll just roll, we'll just keep rolling this along.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Haskew?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Waive reading and introduce an ordinance making exemption findings under SEQA pursuant to section 15061 paragraph, or parentheses B, parentheses 3, and amending the municipal code to implement new and revised standards for non-residential developments, minor updates to standards for residential developments, minor modifications to the design review process, and the role of the DRC consistent with recent council direction and action as modified by the errata sheet.
And I'm going to second that. So I have some... Okay. That gets us to the roll call vote that gets us to go home.
Mayor Protem Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And I am double-checking, because I have been known to forget. Oh, no. The next item on the agenda is the adjournment. We'll see you at the next council meeting. And the meeting is adjourned.